Department reports, uh, Fire Chief Butler.
I kept the packet together because I got other stuff in there for minutes, so I just labeled it. Yeah.
Good evening.
Good evening, Chief.
Uh, last month's report for February two thousand seventeen, structure fires one in the city, stove fires one in Richland Township, unauthorized burns one in the city, mutual aids one in Henry Township, auto fire alarms one in Rochester Township, field fires one in Rochester Township, accidents, two in the city, two in Rochester Township, one in Newcastle Township, gas leaks one in the city, medical assists, we had fourteen in the city, three in Rochester Township, one in Richland Township, we drove the ambulance twice, we had one cancel call in Liberty Township, thirty-one runs and one drill. Pending your questions, that concludes my report.
Anyone have any questions for the chief? Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
Chief shots.
Good evening.
Good evening, Andy.
Uh, for the month of February, we had a total of ten accidents, one of those being personal injury. We issued a hundred and two total warnings, we had fifty-nine total offenses, forty-one case reports, five hundred and seventy-five calls for service, twenty-six lockouts, seven towed vehicles and twenty-three people incarcerated. And then you have the crimes, that's those people we're lodged for. Do you guys have any questions about those? Our numbers are up for the first two months as compared to last year. I don't know why, but they are. And they are up from January because we've got two officers back from the academy. So that equates for some of that. I'm sure you guys are aware, but Shroff and Wood are back from the academy. And we're accepting applications until April fourteenth and then we'll, we'll see how it goes from there. And you never know. Right now, we did, we've only got about three turned in, but there's been about thirty that have been handed out. Typically, that last push, that last week will get a, a push and most people get them turned in then. So, uh, we haven't set a date for testing yet. We, we kinda wanna evaluate because we're gonna have to hire two with Norris leaving and then we still haven't filled Burton's position. We'll just see how it goes. We'll see how many are turned in and then we'll evaluate from there, either extended or set testing date.
Yeah, it, it should be noted because I've had some folks ask, "Why do we have the turnover that we have?" And the chief and I have talked about this. It isn't pay per se. We are paying better than a second-year state policeman. And around the area municipalities we compete with, we, we have a pretty good pay situation. I've written with these folks, we've done exit interviews with all of them and this is kinda what happens, and correct me if I'm wrong, chief. When a young person graduates from a college in law enforcement, they wanna be an officer, the first thing they do is go on the internet and see if they're hiring where they wanna be. And in most cases, the couple that I have exit interviewed, they wanted to be around their home area. Officer Burton wanted to get back to the Carmel area and Officer Norris wanted to get to the Bloomington area. Actually, he's going to be a campus policeman for IU. If there's no available spots in those areas, then they look for the closest area they can to go to apply. And unfortunately, when you have an officer that comes in with that in mind, Rochester becomes bridge employment. What I mean by that is they're here till that vacancy becomes available where they would really like to be. So, we, we've kicked this around and with Officer Wood and Officer Shroff, we added some new criteria and that was roots to the community. So, you know, we've got that in our criteria for searching now. Trying, trying to, to find people, pick people who have family, who, who are invested in the community in some way. And there won't be then a less, more likely than not to have the bridge employment situation. Is that a fair assessment?
Yeah, I'd say so. And try to get our officers invested in the community after they're hired.
Right.
Try to get them involved.
Right.
I know a lot of us are involved in sports, coaching and things like that. So, yeah, I mean, once you're involved with the community, it makes it home. And that's all we can hope for.
Officer Wood, for example, has a, a family. He has purchased a home out on Park Road. Kids are entrenched in the community. He says he's gonna be here, he's gonna, this is gonna be his community. Officer Dennison, who's a young, single policeman, written with him, talked to him and his comments are, "Well, you know, I have a girlfriend from the big city who's going to be moving up here. Our plans are to be here in this community and she doesn't want me to be a police officer in Indianapolis. She thinks more of me than that." So, okay, you've got, got that going for you too. There is a certain amount of safety for a police officer in Rochester, Indiana, as opposed to an Indianapolis. So, you've got that and you think, "Okay, that person's gonna be vested." Alani Shroff, of course, those of you who know Alani, she has family here in the community and, uh, we believe Alani's gonna be around for a while, quite a while. So, those are kinda things you gotta look at too. Because we, we, we don't wanna be in a revolving door process.
Sure. I couldn't agree more. We get tired of draining them too.
Oh, we do.
And the cost.
I was just gonna say, I don't like writing the checks.
The cost is bad, but there's no way you can keep someone here either and have them on a contract.
Well, you can't, you can't tie 'em here, no, no. But we can, we can take a look at some other things besides the basic criteria that we look at. Uh, any other questions for the chief? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Warren Lees is ill and Derek is out of town. So, that brings us to Lenny, Lenny Gonley, the street department.
Derek did leave a copy of his report on your, I later.
Is he on vacation? Is he on vacation again? Is he on vacation again?
No.
Mother laws.
Mother laws.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Well, at the street department, we've been cleaning storm drains as it is getting into the wet season. We ran the recycling route, ran downtown and parked trash receptacles. Been picking up bags, patch of holes. We chip brush.
He's winking at me because I said, "Don't start with chip brush. You always start with chip brush." Break it up a little.
We, uh, mixed up a hundred and thirty-five tons of salt and sand to fulfill our two thousand sixteen quota. Shawta and I got together and submitted our name in the pool for the two thousand seventeen bid quotes for salt. Been working on street signs and that's all we have, I have for the street department. Any questions?
Have you been in touch with the NB?
I, I got in touch with them today about that, the parking lot.
Yeah.
He's working up another quote to make sure it's still the same as what it was last year and he's supposed to get back with me either Friday or Monday.
Okay, that's for the senior citizens and that's the first on our list this year.
Yep.
And he, he's breaking it up in two different quotes.
Yeah.
And then the, the gather quote. But anyway, yeah, I got with him this morning, so.
Okay, good.
But I have a few things for the park. Everybody's back to work now today, started Monday, back to work. The bathrooms are now cleaned and operational, all the water's turned on. And then I'd like to give a shout out to a couple of groups. Jeff Markley and Brian Tom, Thomas are spearhead the correctional workers and they've been out cleaning up the park and doing a, a few numerous active, other activities throughout the city and I'd just like to give them a, a thank you for all that they've done. And also, Joe Coke and Rick Benus of R E M C, I'd like to give them a thank you as well for fixing the lights at Fensler Park that was dangling down about to fall. They came and removed them for us and they've helped us with other community projects and I'd just like to say thank you to them as well.
Very nice, very good.
That's, that's all I have.
Any questions for Lenny? Any, any, any progress on the disc golf?
Uh, why, why do you have the baskets? They're down at the main depart, uh, street department and just waiting on Kyle to see what's, he's got going on, but we're getting closer.
Okay. Thank you, thank you.
How's your game, Mayor?
What's it? Yeah, game. Yeah, the golf swing's gone, now it'll be cartwheel tunnel, you know? Okay, reports of committees. Well, we've got the area planning commission first with Councilwoman Miller.
The area planning commission last, met last evening and the first discussion was the landscaping and the design of the West Ninth Main Street Park and I think Casey's going to be speaking further on that tonight, so I will not go further into that. And then we also discussed and had approval on a few things from outside the city and in the county pertaining to Kiwanah, Fulton, Akron and then also some redefinition of land in Rocha, or property in Rochester. The Grace Church will be redefined from residential cluster to institutional, recreational on a proportion of la, on a portion of land that they have south and, south of the church, south of the first east portion of the church that sits right there on the street. And then Dr. Fromfelder will also go from residential to HD, which is, I've just now forgotten. Yeah, okay, there you go, for his office property there. The others were out of town. If you're interested in them, I can tell you, but they were for Kiwanah, Fulton and Akron. Anyone, okay, all right. That was about it and we closed our meeting.
Any questions for Karen? And Brian's not here, so we'll ask Carrie about FedCo.
Yes, me about FedCo and I was gonna ask Karen about the plant commission meeting last night with the park at ninth and main, assuming things went well with that last night. Looks like we have locked in a, uh, some proposals on all the aspects of completion of the park. I'll be talking with the executive committee for FedCo on Thursday morning, looking for the approval to go forward and sign contracts, maybe as soon as, as Friday. Then we have a, a great visual from, uh, one of the contractors. That looks like a really, it's kind of a really nice space. We spent several months, a small team, working on design elements for it and getting things together that it's gonna be an asset that we can all be proud of in the community. So hopefully, we can sign some contracts this week and get it on a schedule to get completion. Amy is pushing me for the twenty-fourth weekend of June. We'll see about that, but we hope to have it on a work schedule pretty soon. So, any questions or thoughts on that?
Is that, what do we call that? Is that a video concept? Is that what that is?
So, it's a mock-up basically of a walk through the park with all the amenities.
Casey says no.
Better terminology, no more question on that.
It is, it's a, it's a video, a three-D rendering of the park. But it's just a proposed draft until everything is signed.
Okay, gotcha.
Uh, we have, um, we'll be applying to the community foundation for a grant there. We'll be using some of the Rochester redevelopment commission funds. We have about twenty-five thousand in private donations to move it forward. So, I think we'll move that forward pretty soon, I think, starting pretty soon. Good deal on that. Just to let the council know, working on a, if you're not already aware, there's a wind development company that's looking at a rather large project in south and western Fulton County, parts of northern Cass County and northern Miami County. So, there are land agents looking at contracts and so forth. I don't know if that was on the plan commission agenda, you mentioned the project in Kiwanah, but wind company R A S Energy Colorado that's looking at a wind project there. The company we did business with, that we actually sold FedCo property to in Kiwanah, Jess Daly, Daly Farms, out of the Star City area, looking at a small, two-bean gallon annual production butanol facility. We're looking for sites between Kiwanah and Rochester. They like thirty-one, but we have a, a spot or two in Kiwanah that might work for them. So, we're trying to help them locate some real estate. On small business side, I put, and you guys in the green folder there, some information that we have on our small business development program with FedCo. Some of the numbers in terms of the amount of money that we've been able to loan to businesses, just over three hundred thousand with some loans made late last year. We're applying to USDA for additional revolving loan funds of ninety-nine thousand dollars that we'll get the application in on pretty soon. The board signed a corporate resolution for us to apply for those funds, so we'll have more funds to lend out pretty soon. We've run ninety-three students through our business planning and management course. We actually have a meeting right now with four businesses to be, they're small business startups that are looking to go into our next level program, class that's starting next week. And then we're also, we think that one thing that's important in our community, especially some of the small rural towns, is restaurants, cafes, that kinda things. We're actually doing a, a three-part training just for restaurant businesses throughout the county. And we have five businesses that have signed up so far, three within the county and two from outside Fulton County that are coming in for this training. And that's all I was gonna cover on the FedCo side until the redevelopment commission report, so.
You wanna just?
Terry.
There's a lesson even else.
I'm sorry. On the wind farm?
Mm-hmm.
Are you free to discuss at all how many locations that might be in Fulton County?
I, I don't have those numbers off the top of my head. Marty, it, it, in the area, it's a significant number. I mean, in the whole project, it's about a third of the project size, I believe.
Is in.
A little less than a third, but yeah, it's in Fulton County.
Okay.
How many could be established per acre?
I don't know the specifics on that. It's kind of early, I think, in the process. Casey may even have additional information.
I couldn't, I don't do the math, couldn't do the math in my head. I mean, there's setbacks on each one of them.
Yeah.
And that would probably, if they could do them back to back to back, I mean, that would be highly calculated.
Steve Metzger gave like an initial amount, I'm not sure if we're allowed to say that out loud, but I would let Brian Lewis speak to that.
I would say it if I had the information. I don't have it with me, I'm sorry. But I can get it to the council and, you know, it's.
Ninety-six is the original, he said.
Yeah, we have the wrong commissioner here tonight.
You're needing ninety, she's needing ninety-six acres or they're needing ninety-six windmills? Okay.
Yeah, I was thinking a hundred, but.
Yeah, I think he said around ninety-six.
Just curious, thank you.
Yeah, we'll get you more information.
You wanna go right into the redevelopment?
I'm sure. We have worked through changing part of the Rochester Tiff district. As you guys may recall, we are at that process where there is a resolution that the council needs to approve. The public hearing was held, there was no public attendance. The idea is to delete the old rail lines out of the Rochester redevelopment commission Tiff district. We've had some requests from the county to do that and so we've gone through the redevelopment commission, the plan commission, the city council, the public hearing, city council again, and then the redevelopment commission will be at their meeting next week to finalize everything. So, I need review and acceptance of the resolution of the council, appointing, excuse me, approving, the amending, the resolution of the redevelopment commission, of the declaratory resolution. You see the title there. So, also, under redevelopment commission, we can take that one piece of business or, or keep moving. I know you guys have just had the resolution in front of you, very briefly.
It's in the green here.
It's under your.
It's in the middle of that green folder, Marty.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that, Andy.
You're asking for us to do that tonight or after the mission meets, or the next week?
Uh, it will be tonight.
I would hope we could hold that for a little bit.
We're gonna need to establish a number and everything.
Exactly. I was just gonna say, 'cause I, I just got this tonight and I believe, because of a prior request from Terry, I believe I already have a resolution number that I had on hold, but if you could give me two seconds to check that, I will.
While we're, while we're waiting, one other FedCo note. Tell a little bit about the conference call with Frank Bowley and Toby Buck and myself last Thursday. I think that's the, Bowley is our fellow over in Illinois, who's we've been working with for several months now on a plan to move here to Rochester from East Peoria. And the program's moving along. He's stepping right up. He has now put a business plan together that he's shared with his customers and his vendors, primary customer being Caterpillar, stating in it that he's making the move to Rochester and pointing out all the reasons why. And also felt that that was a good place to be to service his biggest customer in Lafayette, Caterpillar, the orthopedic industry, Paragon Medical, and also some interest in South Bend and Indianapolis. Makes a good location for him here. So, that's moving along and Mr. Buck was still very encouraging, but he wanted to be very blunt. He said, "Don't anticipate a move here for you to be solely kept in business by the orthopedic business. You're gonna have to have more than that," which he, he realized and was thoroughly aware of that in his planning as such. So, it was a good conversation. Buck's still going to help him become tier-two in the orthopedics world, which is not a walk in the park. That takes quite a bit to do, so he's gonna help him with that. So, that's, that's where we are and it was a good conversation and there's more to come. Said he'd be back in touch, which we're keeping close contact with him. Since the last time we met, Terry's also had some communications with Brad Cashaw, the vice president of the Deans, that we went to see, one of the gentlemen. I've had a phone conversation with Ralph Scazafava, the president, and we're just continuing to keep that line of communication open. We're trying to get Mr. Cashaw to visit. He wanted to come to Rochester and visit the facility firsthand. He has been with Deans for about six months. So, we're, like I said, just keeping the lines of communication open there.
After six months, it's time for him to get out of the office, right?
That's right, time for him to make a road trip.
There you go.
Shawta, you got?
Yes, it would be resolution two dash twenty-seventeen. Or zero-two dash, if you wanna write it.
Okay. You have the floor, Terry?
Uh, yeah, so I guess, uh, reading and vote on the resolution that we can amend the Tiff district.
Any, anything else?
Also, I have a report that the, for safe routes to school. I have also in your packet some, basically some photographs of the, we had a walk-to-school days back in November. We had six weeks that we did that. We had fifteen to twenty kids each time. The grant that we have from NDOT allowed us to provide some incentives and so forth to the kids, some safety items, some flashing lights and stuff like that, for the walk into school, with biking to school. And one of the things we also wanna get to is some infrastructure down as a second phase of the project, so you can look at basically our route for walking the kids, getting the kids together to, to get to school. There's the west side of Fulton Avenue between the northwest corner of the library and Fourth Street and then Fourth Street goes into the north side of Riddle School. So, a lot of the approaches at the intersections are not, are broken up, not ADA accessible. There's a lot of different damages along the sidewalks in those areas. Fourth Street and Fulton Avenue, you know, there's, there's, there's some kids coming up Fourth Street that are crossing Fulton Avenue. There's not a four-way stop there, so they're having to cross traffic. There aren't any crosswalks marked in any of these areas. So, for your future community investment plan, a, a look at that west side of Fulton Avenue specifically and Fourth Street turning into Riddle would be something that we would propose that you give a look at for future investments. Also, we're getting ready to start the second round of the walk to school. The volunteers right now are hosting that for kids every Tuesday morning, starting next week until, I think, the end of school, so I think it's eight weeks this time around. And that's the wellness coordinator, Betsy Hines from Purdue, extension, a couple of the teachers from either the elementary or middle school. Andy Schatz and the other police officers have been there, which has been great. We, we would like to, we're gonna continue to do that. We would love to have volunteers in the community, whether it's city council or parents, that would help us establish maybe a second day during the week that we could hold an event like that to, to, to just increase awareness of, of the benefits of walking and biking to school and how to do it safely and so forth. So, we're going to launch another program next week. We're gonna have the elementary school kids from Riddle meet at the northwest corner of the library. At seven fifteen, we'll get them into school before eight o'clock and then you're, you know, by seven forty-five and you're back to business by eight o'clock. So, if anyone would like to join us next Tuesday, that'd be great. And then also, the middle school is starting the program where basically we're going to educate and incentivize kids, increase awareness through, again, through the grant funds, with everything from some helmets and stickers and pencils and those kinda things to one of the sticks with the sugar, pixie sticks, I think they're called, you know, the kids really like those, I think, at the middle school. So, get them walking to school and then dosing on sugar, that'd be a great combination.
Wonderful combination.
That we appreciate.
And we're also looking at a, at a bike rodeo event possibly just after school's out for those members of youth that are in Kiwanas. I did a little research and those bike rodeos were actually started up by the Kiwanas group some decades ago to increase safety on bikes and stuff like that for kids. So, maybe there's a partnership there, I don't know.
Thank you, and I ran the first bike rodeo, weren't we? Very possible. Remember you rode.
Big tall wheels.
Um, also in your packet, there's some, just some information on some signage, some temporary signs or permanent signs are allowed in the grant that we have from NDOT. So, I'll probably be talking with Lenny, maybe you guys again, just to move forward with the purchases and signs that we could use to help increase safety and visibility along at least the, the elementary school route. Right away, we can't build sidewalks and that kinda thing with the grant funds, but we can provide some signage, so we're with the street department to make sure we get that in place or appropriate as soon as we can.
Would the NDOT money allow you, you like some school agency or just down to twenty-five, what do you think?
It ha, it has to really relate to the, the safe route to school project. So, if it's around the middle, which is elementary and middle, not high school, but elementary and middle schools, so. Uh, we haven't done anything really at Columb... We haven't done anything really at Columbia because K through two, biking and walking to school, we don't, I think, have very much of that. We do have some, but we're starting at Riddle because, again, we've got twenty kids that are turning out for just a fun way to get to school. So that's all I have, unless you guys have questions.
Anything? Anyone for Terry? Thank you, Terry. Councilman Heidi, the park board.
All right. Lenny covered part of his portion of this.
You're welcome.
Thanks. Dave Clark came in and asked permission to use the T-ball diamond again this year. That was granted. He said they currently have two hundred and sixty, two hundred and sixty-two youth signed up, and eighty of which are T-ball. Sarah Reese from Riddle PTO requested ten day passes for the pool for incentives to...
For a fundraiser.
For a fundraiser they're doing. I can't remember, was that table? Or was those?
No, they approved it.
Those are approved? Okay. So we approved that. Lenny mentioned the disc golf, and they have the baskets in. Kyle Kofen has been a huge asset on this, and we're gonna push him to do it. The Parks Program this year will be again run by Donna Freyzinger and Laura Maynes. And Kyle brought up that if they wanted to do something with the new disc golf, there's a lot of disc golf organizations who will give out free discs to youth. He could probably get about a hundred discs donated to the Parks Program so they could utilize the new baskets this summer, so that'd be nice. And if there aren't any questions, that is it for the Parks.
Okay. Should probably let you know those day passes. We can't do that with tax money. So we approved those passes, but we passed the hat. The mayor and the city clerk and a couple ladies in the office who said, "Yeah, we'll kick in for that." We raised the money for it.
Thank you, yes.
Yeah, you're quite welcome. It's a good idea, but we can't use tax funds for that. Thank you, councilman. Any questions for the councilman?
Good job on passing the hat, didn't you? I didn't know that.
Well, it didn't go around once, you know. Hit the mayor twice.
And he guilted my deputy into helping too, so, you know.
Oh, did he?
Yeah, she needed to. She's a swimmer. Okay, the Rochester BZA, Council on Aging, Councilman Smith.
BZA met last month, had two items on the agenda. One was tabled till next month. The other one was a request for forty-eight feet of additional, forty-eight square feet, I'm sorry, of additional signing space at 109 East Ninth Street. That's the little brick building beside where Pizza King is on the corner of Ninth and Main.
Oh, yes.
And that was approved three zero. The bigger news probably for BZA, Greg Brown resigned effective immediately. And I believe maybe that's the mayor's position to a point, so I know that you're looking at that.
Couple of people considering it.
Yeah. So that was it for the BZA. Council on Aging met yesterday, and Kane from RSVP was not there, so there's not an RSVP report. From Fulton County Transpo, the big news is the anticipation of rides going down is not happening at all. And as of the end of February, Transpo is averaging two hundred and twenty-four trips a day. They did four thousand two hundred and eighty-four trips in February alone and are well on pace for doing more than fifty thousand trips this year. From Council on Aging, the big news was that we did apply for a community grant, the Indiana Community Foundation, and we were fortunate to receive seventeen thousand five hundred dollars from the foundation, which is a matching grant, which is going to go to buy two replacement vehicles in 2017. The golf outing, for those that would be interested, we're gonna move it back in the year just a little bit. The weather's been horrendous for that event for the last couple of years, so it is now set for June ten. The fire inspection has been done in the building. There was six hundred dollars of fix that needed to be made, which has been done. You've probably seen in the paper that for the first time in I don't know how long, but almost forever, that there's a change in the rate for rides. That's effective May first. I reported last month that there was a Sabre that was for sale that was parked out front of the Council on Aging that did sell, and a thousand dollars, which was a good deal for the council, but it was a good deal for the young lady that bought it. The only bad news was she's now no longer needing a ride in Council on Aging.
She's giving rides herself.
Yeah, right. The board also, everybody received a copy of the bylaws. We are in the process of rewriting those just a little bit, and also making sure that our procedures are following the bylaws that are in place. And the last thing I will mention, just to the council to think about, it is becoming harder and harder for the Council on Aging to run. The funds are dwindling, and two years ago, United Way support was ten thousand dollars. It has since been cut to forty-two hundred dollars, and yet, between Transpo and the services that are provided at the council continues to be a busier place than ever. So something that we might be considering in the next budget cycle is maybe a little more support from the city on...
Upping that line item?
So, that's it pending. Any questions?
The fire inspection deficiencies, which building was that in?
That was in the main, yes. And all it was, was they tried to keep, there's a couple of sets of big, heavy doors. And when they're closed, which the fire inspectors say they need to be closed in the event of a fire, but the reality is the people that use the building, they're in, using walkers or canes or wheelchairs, and they simply can't open the doors. The bathroom doors are hard enough to... So the fix was a magnetic latch that's on the wall. The door is kept open. The magnetic latch is attached electronically to the fire alarm system, so if an alarm would go off, the magnetic latch releases and the door closes. But it allows them freer access in the building, the people that are using it, so.
The reason I ask, not a lot of people know this, and it gets a little confusing sometimes. Ex-commissioner Rose can back me up on this. The city has primary responsibility for the main building. We own the main building, but the garage, new garage, was the county. I think we ran into that with insurance company, I'm sure I found that out. The county was the main title holder, main name sponsor on the grant to build that garage. Right, okay. Make sure Lois sets another one to put down in the file.
Shot it, or went through that.
I have a question, Mark. It's in charge of snow room, will the sidewalks ever that?
The city.
The city is in charge of the snow room.
Yeah, we do that. The lawn maintenance, the snow removal.
It's all city.
All city.
It's all city.
Any call on that? Any question on it?
That's gonna be interesting. So we own the property, but the garage is owned by the county. But we do, we do know. Okay. Chase is not here this evening for his report, a solid waste of the animal adoption, sir.
There were reports in the council packets that he denied. So if you had a chance to review them.
Okay. Stacy, would you like to stand up and tell about the last meeting? Mention what Chase was gonna go through, or do you know, you have all that?
I don't have all that with me.
Okay. Tree board and EMS, Councilman Fitzwater?
Tree board met on the sixteenth of March. The main topic was the new, the new list of trees that need to be addressed, either looked at, limbed up, or taken down. Ray Dossman and Eric Schlaff are going to look at those and bring back the ones they said yes they had to come down, or the ones that could wait or are not gonna be coming down. The main topic. At that time, it was still too early to see if the main, the new trees on Main Street, to see if they, how they had done. But, you know, two weeks since then now, it might be, might be budding out, or I think so.
Showing some signs of life.
Hopefully, they all will. And I need to train Lenny Connolly to give reports, 'cause he did, he is now coming to our meetings and tying in. Well, the second time you were there.
He was, he was there for me, yeah.
But with Derek Holloway, basically he gives Councilman Garrett's report. I need to train Mr. Connolly to do my reports.
Just on the case.
I know, I know.
You're pushing your luck.
Well, I'm gonna work on it.
I don't like where you're going with that, Brian.
But that was basically it. We met on the sixteenth because of personal on vacation for the normal first meeting, and we'll meet again next Thursday for the tree board. And hopefully, well, at that point, we'll have a better understanding as to what needs to come down, then we'll rebid that again.
But Lenny, since you brought Lenny up there, he was there asking for some relief on the tree lawn area for the Ninth and Main Street Park.
Correct.
Will be located. Don't wanna have the nice park and then have some trees thrown up where they're not gonna complement the park.
Yeah, no. That wasn't, as far as I know, that wasn't any part of what the tree board was going to do. We're looking at taking down the ones that have to come down and replacing those if they need to be replaced. The EMS board did not meet this past month. It is scheduled to meet on the fourteenth of April, but we found out that's Good Friday, and so we're gonna try to move it to the following Friday. But if there are proper notices and all that.
Has Reverend May approached you, the tree board from the Lutheran Church, relative to the big tree out in front of their church? Do you know up hand?
I don't know. There are so many, sometimes they come in with just the addresses, so I don't know. Do you know where that is roughly?
It's right over here behind us at the Lutheran Church. Yeah, yeah, just if you would, check with the board, your next meeting.
Was it Reverend?
Casey, do you know of any action that is there? Has he been viewed?
I haven't heard anything since we got out there to look at it.
About the parking, okay.
Is it, I was over there, Reverend May or Mayes?
Reverend May.
Okay.
May wine.
All right, I will pass that on.
Thank you. Any questions for Councilman Fitzwater? Councilman Garrett, the water board?
Can't believe it. I'm gonna get talked a little bit again. It happens once every once in a while, when Eric's on here to cover all the bases.
He's pretty thorough, isn't he?
Yes, he is. Does a nice job. I always compliment him. And we met on March the sixth. Of course, they went over the length of the list for the month of March, and it was approved. Update by Derek was that everything is just running fine, which is what we want to hear. I also did a drive-by the other day, and that's one thing I wanted to talk to Derek about, as to the company, the electric company that has been in behind the water plant. And Derek had mentioned, I do believe, at our last meeting, that's why I went over the other day, that they tore up the grounds a little bit. Well, I'm gonna go take a look and see.
Interesting.
One person's opinion of it being torn up, and another person will be, "It's torn up." Brother, it's torn up. And we have to stay on them to make sure that, I do know that other utility companies, when they tear up the ground, they bring dirt in, they seed it, and we have to stay on them to get them to do that for us, 'cause that is not our responsibility and our people and our money should not have go for topsoil and grass seed. Update was presented to Derek at the board on Fearless Midwest. They've completed their yearly maintenance on wells three, four, five, all high-service pumps and backwash pumps. Wells one and two will be completed later in the spring when the power line company is complete with their project, and that's what we're talking about. The Fulton County Youth Leadership Academy was at our last meeting. It's high school students that are required to attend to meetings a year, and they chose the Rochester Water Board meeting. They didn't have a lot to say or comment on, but they were in our meeting and got their...
Tea, man.
Yeah, yeah. They were very nice and very candid. They had a couple of good, pretty good questions, honestly. And then the board reviews the letter for the new billing cycle. They asked for a letter to be sent out right away, which is a great idea, to businesses and regular customers, and after any changes have been made. And they're gonna get on that and get them sent out just as soon as possible.
Or, yeah.
Did a great job.
For the businesses, the businesses are going out this week.
They're going this week?
Yes.
I said I didn't have one on my last one, but that's great. Update was presented to the board on the employee sick vacations, and none of them were. And Marvin, there was no further business to be done, but they did make a new one-inch cap for the animal shelter. And other than that, the meeting was closed at five thirty. Any other questions? It was a fast meeting. Normally, they last a little longer than that, but any other questions for anybody? Nope.
That's pretty complete. Did a nice job.
I never get to do that for a...
You just wanted your voice on.
I know, I need you on, I need you on too.
Anything for John? Rochester Downtown Partnership, Sarah Reese.
Good evening. I'm gonna try to talk a little fast, 'cause I kind of have a lot that we have going on right now, which is good. But we have opened our next round of facade grant applications. Those applications will be accepted until May first, and we have two different, as we did last year, we have two different options for either business or building owners that they can apply for. One is primarily for signs and awnings. They are one-to-one matching grants for up to a thousand dollars. And then we also have facade grants that are more for like windows and brickwork, that kind of thing. Those are one to three matching grants for up to five thousand dollars. As I said, those applications are due by May first. Winners will be notified by June first, and we ask the work to be completed by October thirty-first. So those are quick turnaround grants that hopefully we'll be able to see some additional improvements to our downtown. We have about eighteen thousand dollars to award this year, thanks to the redevelopment commission, so we are anxious to see which applications come in. We did have two informational workshops last week at the library with Indiana Landmarks to help those property owners kind of understand how to maintain the historic appeal of their buildings and, but still be feasible. And the two gentlemen that we work with from Indiana Landmarks are also willing to work with those applicants if they have proposed design that is not in line with the historical aspect of what we're wanting to see, to kind of help them to make it that way, and to see what their options are in terms of maintaining the historic integrity of their buildings. So it's not just gonna be a, nope, this doesn't qualify if it doesn't adhere to those guidelines. They're gonna work with those applicants on how to adhere and how to make their buildings historically relevant. So another big, kind of big announcement that we had, that we made on my radio show last week, we have partnered with Split Road Media and our Economic Vitality team, which is headed up by Mason, and we are going to be offering to five property owners, kind of as a trial run, some virtual tours of their properties, those businesses or those property owners that are looking to either rent or sell their properties. Our focus is on that mains, main level commercial property. We are also, our kind of preferences for those who are actively looking to fill those spaces. Um... spaces, at no cost to the owner, will do these virtual tours. Like I said, it'll be for five properties as a trial run. When those virtual tours are done, those five properties will have a sign board in their window, window that'll have a QR code on it, and that QR code will then link to our website where that virtual tour will be. But it's not just gonna be specific to that one property. So when they follow that QR code with their smartphone, it'll link back to all the properties we have available. Mason has gotten from Casey's office kind of a building inventory of what we have, and we're gonna be working on getting specs from those building owners and knowing, you know, is this a property that's move-in ready? A business could walk in, move their stuff in, and turn the, turn the lights on tomorrow? Or is this a property that's gonna need more work to be able to move into it? So when they link back to that website, it's gonna have all the properties that are available in our area. It won't just be those five that we have virtual tours for. It'll have all the specs that we have about the building, space, like I said, condition of the property. And then if the property is for sale, it will have all the information for the listing agent. So this is something that we're hoping is gonna be kind of a help to the Realtors, that this is, we're not in the business of trying to sell property. This is something that they can utilize if they are trying to sell a business or a building downtown, that they would be able to say, hey, click on this link and you can see a virtual tour of the property. It might actually make it easier for them to sell the property, because outside investors would be able to have kind of that bird's eye view of what the property looks like.
Coming on that.
Yeah.
And yes, while this program might help a building owner, that's not the focus of the program. The focus is to help a business that's looking to, looking for a new location.
Mm-hmm.
To see what's available. You know, while, yes, it is added benefit to the building owner, this is a tool for someone looking to relocate.
Right.
Or open up shop downtown.
Absolutely. And that, that is our goal. What Mason's committee is really looking to do, once we have that building inventory more fine-tuned, is to really look at that leakage report that was provided in the revitalization plan and try to seek out some businesses and saying, if we know we're leaking in this one area, and they can find a business in the Kokomo area that's been really successful, and talk to them about potentially opening a second location in Rochester. And then, as Mason said, this would be a tool that they could easily see the properties that are available for them to move those businesses into. So we're really looking at offering something that gives those people looking for a place to put their business, a comprehensive look at what's available, and really help them to say, yeah, this is where I want to be.
You're really gonna do a double take on what the Realtors are already doing.
In the sense of what?
As far as advertising the properties and putting it on the MLS, putting it on the internet, and making it available.
No, this will, this will just link to...
Well, you can put it on the MLS.
I know, yeah.
No.
But we already have it on the, and I say we, because obviously it's...
Right.
So we already have it on the internet and doing the advertising as the listing broker.
Mm-hmm.
So you're going to be like, if I have a listing downtown, you're going to want to use my listing?
No, we wouldn't. If, if there's a building that's listed with a broker, we're not, we're not here to compete.
Right.
No, you can't.
Exactly.
But, okay. So, so what I'm saying is, that you said that if someone, you get in touch with the listing broker?
We would have that contact inform, you know, if a property owner contacts us and says, yes, I'm interested in having you do this for my property, this virtual tour, and they are trying to sell the property, if they have it listed with an agent, we're going to put that contact information in with where we have all the specs on our, on our website, so that if someone's looking to purchase a property and it is a property for sale, then they know who to contact.
Which quite honestly, they, they should already.
They should.
If they're looking to come to Rochester.
Right. And it, and it may be that this is gonna be more appealing to those property owners who are looking to rent their facilities, that aren't wanting to sell the property, but are just wanting to fill a vacant space. This is something that's done quite frequently in larger cities, to have these virtual tours that kind of allows people to be able to see the property before they would contact someone to actually do a physical walkthrough.
Very interesting. There'll be eyes on it.
Yeah, absolutely. That's, that's the goal. We want, we want eyes on downtown Rochester. I know, right?
Sounds like you might be a Realtor or two, watching.
I know, right? And that's, you know...
It's gonna be a little buzz.
And that is one thing that we've said all along, is this is, we don't want to compete, you know, as you said, we can't compete. I mean, this is, that's not our intention. We just recognize there's a lot of vacant properties in downtown Rochester that have potential, and we want people to be able to see what's there if, if they are looking to relocate business or add, add a second location to their business.
And obviously, you have to make suggestions to the process, and you can certainly let it know.
Right.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
And your input's gonna be as valuable as the rest of the input, so.
Comments, concerns?
Right.
No time, lady.
Kind of piggybacking on that a little bit, Amy and Mason and I, and Stephen Wright, who is our contact with the North Central Indiana Regional Planning Council, Commission? Council?
Council.
Council. I never remember what the C stands for. Met with a gentleman from IU Kokomo. His name is Alan Krabenhoff. He is a professor for one of their graduate program courses, and every semester, their grad students that are in this course have to complete a project with a business or a nonprofit organization as part of the course requirement. It is fortunately free to us, which is always an appeal when you are on a very fixed budget. But he, we kind of pitched the idea to him that we would like to work with those graduate students to kind of fine-tune that building inventory in the sense of, you know, we have the information from Casey's office, but working with property owners to say, okay, what are, what are the more detailed specs of that building? What are you trying to fill it with? What are you wanting to put in there? And then also, fine-tuning that leakage report that was in the revitalization plan to say, okay, sporting goods, that's a big category, to say we're losing money in. What specifically are we looking at? Where could we really benefit in terms of dollars? And being able to pursue some businesses based on that information. We're very early in the planning stages of that, and one of the reassurances that Alan gave us is that if he doesn't have students that he feel could successfully complete the project, he's not gonna do it. He's not gonna take it on and give us students that he doesn't think are gonna be able to effectively complete what we want done. So we would be looking at their summer semester, students in that, enrolled in that program for their summer semester, and kind of over the next month or so, we should have more details of how all that's gonna play out. Our promotions team is gearing up for our events that we have that kind of take place in the spring and summer. The color run has been set for May thirteenth, and they are meeting tomorrow to kind of finalize those details, so that we can go to, through the proper channels to make sure that we have roads blocked off as needed and all of that good stuff. Then we are also looking at, as Terry alluded to, our block party on June twenty-fourth, which is why we are hopeful that the Centennial Park will be completed by then, so we can utilize that for part of that block party event. We are anticipating having kind of a different feel to that block party this year and doing more of a Taste of Rochester type of event. Chrissy Rosworm is our, is my lead on that committee, so she's kind of working through all the details of that. And then the last thing I have is that we have about thirteen hundred postcard mailer, not postcard, but flat mailers that will be sent to the mail routes that service the lake this week, and those are offering an opportunity to partner with the Downtown Partnership financially. The, the reason we chose the lake as kind of our initial target area was twofold. One of the reasons is that the businesses in Rochester have said, you know, we support through chamber membership and different things, and we don't want to be asked a million times for money. So we didn't want that to be where we went initially. And then also, the lake population is one that has repeatedly come to the chamber office specifically and said, how can we make downtown more appealing? How can we, you know, tell us more about this downtown partnership? When they come to the lake, they want to have additional things to do and places to go. So they have a vested interest in seeing the downtown thrive, so that's why, why we started there. But those will go out this week. Questions?
I got a question for you.
Sure.
And maybe Terry, I'm gonna ask Terry to help with this one. How are two Ocrum Grant recipients doing on upgrading their properties?
I know that Harry is basically waiting for the weather. He has been working with his architect and getting all of those plans finalized for the, the Webb's building.
Ken's too, he's waiting for a re-roof.
Right.
To start anything inside, so he's waiting for the weather for a re-roof.
Yeah, and I kind of figured that's where he was as well. So they're both kind of just waiting for that. You know, it's Indiana, and while the weather has been nice, we all know, it's not over yet.
Everything on the grants have been approved, and they're just basically waiting for Harry and Ken to submit, you know, requests for the money.
Mm-hmm. And they're just waiting for the weather, so that they can move forward on those things.
I'd see Dr. Hoffs moving right along with the manatean manor apartments.
Got them pretty well gutted, I think.
Yeah. Anything else, Sarah?
Thank you.
Okay, that takes us to unfinished business, our curbside recycling. Been around for a while. I assume we've got a lot of people who like curbside recycling in the audience tonight. And I don't, I don't not like curbside recycling, I don't know what you can say, but we spent the last few weeks with the help of Commissioner Lewis, Chada, digging into records. And this is one thing that's kind of interesting about government. You get people who come and go, and those people who are in their seats today don't necessarily know what transpired years ago. Is that a fair statement, Commissioner Lewis?
Very much.
So we've been doing some record checking, and got some bullet points here, Council. I've got a typo. The district, the solid waste district was formed in nineteen ninety-two. That was edict by the state to the different counties to set up solid waste districts. You could do it in one of two factions. You could fund it through taxes, putting a tax levy on your county residents, or if you're lucky enough to have something like our landfill, you could do it through host fees. Correct me if I say anything wrong here, Commissioner Rose, because you were around in those days, right?
As far as the, you know, you had the landfill option for a host fee, but I believe the other option was, it was a per household fee, because that's the way we did it.
We did it originally. It wasn't done with a tax levy.
No, it's one of the options, though, through the state code. To go through taxes.
Maybe an option, that's how we did it originally, was with a per household fee.
Well, several counties chose to impose it as part of the county taxes. That was an option. I didn't realize that. We did go to households and impose a fee?
That's another option.
That's another option.
There were three options, right?
Okay.
Is it per household? It was called...
But at that time, is that, is that a tax?
It was, they called it a household fee.
Oh, oh.
It's a tax. They're taking our money as a tax.
My bad, Gary. What's he listening to? Where's our pictures?
The rest of them are coming in.
Okay, so, fee would have been different from a tax situation, no?
I don't know. You're giving them semantics there, it's what it's called.
It makes a big difference as to how your solid waste district is set up, because if it's a tax-supported entity, then it's like the animal shelter or the senior center or whatever, and they go through a whole different structure of auditing. Right, Mary Ann? You've got an old auditor in the family, yeah. But anyway, we chose the host fee option to support that entity. With that being said, and those are also called tipping fees, and they were quite lucrative when we started out with the landfill situation. I mean, to a point where months, some months, millions of dollars were coming in for dispersal. There was an ordinance set up by the county, ordinance zero-three-one-six-ninety-nine, which defined how those tipping fees would be utilized. And shares were set up by that ordinance to be dispersed by the county to the county, the city, three area towns, the eight townships, and Fulton County Community Foundation, of the Northern Indiana Community Foundation, for deposit into a non-reverting host fee fund for general county purposes, including but not limited to environmental education and preservation activities as determined by the Fulton County Council. This would be the fund used to pass out the grants, the large grants that were passed out over the years. In the distribution process, after the solid waste district received on a monthly basis thirty-three thousand, three hundred and thirty-three dollars and thirty-three cents, does that figure ring a bell, Stacy? Yeah, that's your regular dispersment you would receive. Then, after about approximately sixty-six thousand dollars going into a host fee fund, what was left was divided by the county. County received a thirty percent distribution, the city received a twenty percent distribution, and the other entities received a proportionate distribution as, as you went down the list. So everybody shared in the, in the wealth. In twenty oh-seven, two thousand and seven, due to a reduction in the host fees, when we first started to see the reduction in the host fees, the county chose to stop giving out shares to the city, the three area towns, and the eight townships. And there's a letter on file, the reason given, well, those monies would now be used to make bond payments for the courthouse renovations and new annex, because that was one of the main reasons the tipping fees were brought in for the county use. That was one of the main reasons. Mayor Thompson objected at that time and wrote a letter, which is on file, wanting to have a meeting of all the stakeholders, the city, the county, and the other towns and townships. The county decided not to have that meeting. Mayor Thompson asked to be put on the agenda for the county council's next meeting. We have no idea what transpired in that meeting. We have yet to come across the minutes.
The records are ready, we just haven't...
We haven't, we have...
They got ready today, we picked them up.
We have more research to do. At no time should citizens' tax monies have been used to fund our curbside program, which we inadvertently started to do in twenty fifteen by bringing the city into that. The statement in the paper's not true. There's been tax monies used to help support that program by virtue of the street department employees and the city assets being used for the curbside. We need to continue to do our investigating. We decided at the city level, talking with Lenny and such, that we're going to continue the curbside for at least another month as it is. But we're requesting a meeting with the county to review the host fee status as things stand today. There have been a lot of changes since two thousand and seven. One of them being, the courthouse and annex bonds have been paid off. So that is no longer an expense for the, the host fee process. So we are requesting, and now I'll do that by virtue of going to a county council meeting, that we sit down and look at this again. There should be twenty-three hundred dollars a month, in my opinion, somewhere in these host fees, even though they've been reduced, to support a curbside program. That's our current position on things. But bottom line is, we still have some more homework to do. And I appreciate Commissioner Lewis's time that he spent on this. Court Beeler, I appreciate her time. There's been some real man-hours put into this, because all this stuff is in boxes, stored away. So that's where we are with it today. We're gonna continue, at least for another month, till we have all the answers sorted out. And like I said, we're gonna try to find some money through the host fee program. Is that on my plan, Commissioner Lewis?
Yeah.
Okay. We at least need an update as to what the situation is today.
I would say, it's obvious that there's a lot of public interest in this topic by virtue of our audience tonight, which is great. And I actually...
Just contacted my two people, interestingly...
Not in my district, but. Who I know well, and they were passionate about the city trying to keep this project going and keeping it local. Well, is the message I got. Like I said, this mayor is not opposed to a recycling program. But I'm also a businessman and a realist when it comes to handling the city assets. And first of all, we have a program where we're servicing twenty-four percent of the households in Rochester with a hundred percent of the residents' tax monies. That's not a good situation. And if we, down the road, there's not a host fee answer to this, and this council decides to make it a line item situation, like the animal shelter or like the senior citizens, we can certainly approach it in that manner. But again, that brings us into a whole different level of accountability.
When you say twenty-four percent, what, where are the other people that are not being served by the recycling?
They're not recycling.
They're just not doing.
Right. Or they go to the, oh, they go to the, I'm one that doesn't do curbside recycling, but I recycle. I take my stuff to the center and we do it at the office as well, so. Yeah, I should say, they're not putting anything out on the curb. And that, that has been a question too, Gretchen. When we first started down this, this road, the city started down this road, five days is what it, twice a month is what it took to complete this, this, this curbside recycle. When the private entities were doing it, it was, instead of ten days a month, it was twenty days a month. And lots of people are saying, well, at one time, it seemed like it would have been twice the many as many people. We're not seeing that. And nor did we see a difference in, in the P and L sheets that we put to look at going back five years as far as the income in the resale of the recyclables. You'd think if there were twice as many people, your recyclables would be twice as, dollar value would be twice as high. We're not seeing that. So are these people, were they recycling and now they're not? Are they taking it out to the, we don't know. We don't know exactly what they're doing. But we know how many households we're going to. We've counted. And again, we're not, we're not doing twenty days. We're doing ten a month.
They never did twenty days.
Oh boy, I've got the invoices here. If you'd like to see them. They got by date.
That's the way they do the invoices. You have to divide that by two. If you look at it.
Stacy, they got May twenty-eighth, May twenty-ninth, May thirtieth. And what, how many households they picked up. They've got it by date on the invoices.
Right.
Now, this is before you, this was before your management tool each out there. This is a past practice. So, you know, is that, is that not a correct figure if you're, say you serviced a hundred and ninety-eight homes on May the twenty-eighth? That doesn't mean you serviced a hundred and ninety-eight homes.
That's not what I'm saying. I'm saying they didn't do it twenty days a month. They've always only done it a week on, a week off. Some of that was probably Akron, Kewana, and Fulton. I don't know. I'd have to look and see what you're talking about, but, because they did Akron, Kewana, and Fulton on the weeks that they didn't do Rochester.
Okay, well, there's a, there's a big difference in the numbers that, that it's about half. We've got, we're servicing about half as many as those numbers that were reported in years past. And again, like I said, going back to the P and L statements, take twenty fifteen, the first time we did it, and the numbers were down. The dollar value for the recyclable inventory that we brought to you wasn't half as much as what it was before. It was very close to the same figure. So I don't know. There's some inaccuracies or something. But at any rate, that number is twenty-four percent of the twenty-four hundred households in Rochester. That poses a lot, David?
Well, in your, in your research, I think the one thing you should look at in your research is, we've had a recycling center here for a long time. We started curbside recycling years after. My question would be, how many more households recycled with curbside than before they hauled it out there themselves? And I remember talking to Mike, what happened? Within a year, there's only like a half a dozen more people recycled because of curbside. And a half a dozen people, to me, doesn't warrant driving city trucks around for two weeks. I mean, most people who recycled before and hauled it out there themselves didn't make a special trip. They did it on their route through town doing other things. I'm not against curbside recycling. I, we curbside recycle, we take it out there both. But if we're only increasing by a few percent of people that run curbside because we come by and pick it up, and everybody else is already taking it out there, to me, it sounds like we're doing a lot of work for not twenty-four percent, but the two percent.
Yeah, and, and we don't know.
Yeah, we don't know that, but that's something.
We don't really know.
They can probably tell you there, how many people brought stuff before, how many brought after. So if you do that research, it'd be great information to have.
Well, at any rate, this is what we've come up with. We do need to sit down with our, our brothers at the county and I think, you know, today, update on where the host fee situation is and where those monies are going. I found in here that in, in Commissioner Rose, you can speak to this, but about two thousand and nine, we established a non-reverting fund for the thirty-one corridor project. And there are host fees going into that. And I assume that's for any miscellaneous costs you incur when the state puts the corridor in and the county has some miscellaneous costs to deal with. It'll be from that upon?
We're just trying to anticipate what some, those costs, we're gonna have some costs and have some fun to deal with. And so our participation in thirty-one coalition is paid for that.
Where are we with Flint County? Are they anticipating taking this over or?
They're, they're on hold. They can, they can react.
We don't have a deadline with them?
They can react pretty quickly what's involved. There it is. We pull the current bins off and give to you and modify our trailer, and then they have roll-offs. Just come in and lock onto the trailer. Unlock, they roll off.
That's what I'm against.
Yeah, no, they're, they're.
I think there's a better answer.
They're not, they're not waiting at Knight Street to charge in. They're, they're on hold for this. So Commissioner Lewis, we got some work to do. Could you see me at the next council meeting?
I have a question. You mentioned meeting with the county officials. Would you also include the solid waste district?
Anybody can, I'm gonna go to the, I'm gonna get on the agenda for the county council meeting. And, and I mean, they're gonna know what it's about. This is on TV. I'm gonna provide the same information. Commissioner Lewis has the same information I have. They all, they all know what we're looking for. We should, should be able to have a dialogue the next council meeting. Do you know the date of that meeting? You know, and Brian?
Third, it's the third Tuesday tomorrow.
Yeah.
It was.
Sixty, thirty.
The eighteenth.
Yeah, the eighteenth, at six-thirty. Or, yeah, six-thirty. We're six o'clock, they're six-thirty. Okay. That's where we, we stand today.
I guess I would, I would point out to the, to answer your question, I believe that was Caroline and I think I recognize her voice. If you want it to be a joint meeting, we had actually done that at our last council meeting. We had scheduled a joint meeting with the solid waste district, the county commissioners, county council, and the city council. And it was, due to doing some research, it ended up not being a viable meeting. So if you guys do wanna schedule a joint meeting like that with all of the entities, it's just a matter of deciding it, setting the date, and then everybody has to do an advertisement that it's a public meeting. Because, for instance, you've got a majority of your solid waste board here now, which could potentially be a violation of the open door law if they were all to speak. So if you do wanna do that and have an open dialogue, that's all that needs to happen, is just to advertise it as a joint meeting with everybody, and then all of you guys can all have that conversation.
Are they covered by the open door law?
They're still covered by the open door law.
Even though they're not a tax-supported entity?
That's my understanding, yes.
Okay, okay. Well, I do know that at the county council meeting, we normally have three commissioners there, don't we? Okay. So I, I would encourage any of you who want to come, we should come to that and find out where we stand today with the host fee situation. Okay. Gene, you've been sitting a long time. Is it the Fourth of July yet?
Well, it's three years before we know it.
We've got Gene Manus here tonight with the American Legion, and I believe the topic is the Fourth of July fireworks. Is that correct?
I'm the newbie at this, remember?
You're the newbie at this?
Yes.
Yeah, I brought her along for support.
Well, let me query you, because the last newbie we had did half their presentation before they figured out they were on TV.
Well, that, never been real shy.
Okay.
Last year, you and Amy came to us and, at the American Legion post here in Rochester, post thirty-six, and asked if we would service sponsors for the Fourth of July fireworks. And being a patriotic, an event that it is, we, I took it to the meeting and you came and spoke, and they elected to take it on. So we're doing it again this year, it appears. And last year, the city was generous enough to support the fireworks with, I believe it was five thousand dollars. I've already spoken to the Lake Mantle Association, and I haven't gotten back a confirmation yet, but they told me that it was in their budget for two thousand dollars. We're a little bit different this year. I'll just tell you, I got a, I sent out a message to the fireworks company, RKM, and got a response back from, from them. And basically speaking, last year, the fireworks ran us about eighty-five hundred dollars. And right at, I mean, I guess that was the amount.
Or they aren't cheap.
No, they are not. And they're not getting any cheaper. And in his response, he came back and basically says, to maintain a similar show as, as last year will require a show budget of eighty-nine hundred dollars. A four hundred dollar increase on it. And he also put in there that if, if we could see fit to bump it to nine thousand even.
Of course.
He likes even numbers.
That they are going to add an additional twelve three-cylinder shots and, what is it? They give it, they call it the final cylinder titanium salute chain. So we're not real sure as to what we're going, whether it's just gonna be to, to upgrade on that. But the support the city gives us is definitely gonna be important to do this. The other thing I wanted to bring up is, is last year, we did it on the Third of July instead of the Fourth. For one reason is that's a, we're directly competing with Akron, and that being their birthday. And we didn't see any reason to try and draw people from them, nor from us. So again, this year, the Fourth of July being on a Tuesday, we'd like to tentatively, I have it tentatively set up to do the Third of July again this year, with the Fourth of July being the rain date, should we get rained out. And unless there's some objection to that, then I would contact them and finalize that. So.
Yeah, the other part of that, that we had spoken, and I think that she had, Monica, had spoken, was to speak to Tom Butler on a.
Yes.
Conference call, wherever he's at, regarding putting the potential food truck in that horseshoe area to be able, yeah, two of them. Last year, we had worked it out with Tom, with Chief Butler, to potentially give them the opportunity to have a fundraiser to raise the extra funds for the fireworks that's not supported by the city and/or by the Lake Mantle Association. And generally, the other funds come from the other service organizations. But we wanted to make sure that was still okay, because it is city property, and so we wanted to confirm that that would still be acceptable.
Chief, how do you feel about that?
On the east of, east of the building where the bays are, there's a, there's a grass area right next to the building where the driveway circles around. Because they're gonna need electricity and water, I said, I could send two up there, but two would be a limit, because I have to be within the fire codes, ten feet away from the building, inadequate space between the trailers. If I enforce it uptown, I have to enforce it out of the station as well. So that would, that would provide two vendor spaces for them to, to do something.
That's okay with you? That fits your, would you make a note? We need to bring this to the Board of Works.
Sure.
You can do that Thursday.
And that would provide the additional potential financing to support whatever they are not able to fundraise.
You know, the, the first thing the Board of Works always wants to know is what does the Chief Butler or Chief Schatz have to say about.
Sure.
Something that involves those things. What Chief Butler bring it to the Board of Works meeting for me?
The other thing that we're doing, to, Monica set this up, and I didn't realize that she's been helping me with all this. And I didn't realize, but Dairy Queen has a sponsor, sponsorship night, day, evening, whatever you wanna call it, every month. And we have three of them scheduled, one in April, one in May, and one in June at this point. But we were told that we could do them every month if we wanted to.
That's a certain portion of their sales?
They donate ten percent of their, of their sales from four o'clock till closing. Which is a great program. I'd like to, I mean, I'm commending them on that. That is a great program. So we are set up to do that, and I'm looking for volunteers, anybody that wants to help. But, because we do need to be there. Pardon?
It's not a lot of work.
No, I understand that, but it's, they, they requested that somebody from the organization be there during that time.
Mark and I couldn't help out, because we eat more ice cream.
That's just more money that goes in, right?
I knew getting these guys involved was a thing to do.
Amen. Hard workers. You could, this guy is, you know, we can commend this guy. He has taken this project and he has ran with it. He's such a support. He's freed up some of my time to be able to focus on other chamber benefits and.
Sure had a feeling that that would happen.
Yep, yep. So are we good for the five thousand?
Thank you, but it's, it's more than one.
Yeah.
Believe me.
Monica, so is there additional step for the five thousand dollar appropriation?
We have, it's in the charitable contribution line section.
Yeah, it's already a line item. I just need an invoice to pay it.
Okay.
But it's, it's five thousand dollars. We can't up it. The budget's already established. But that's, we have a charitable contribution line item. That's.
Yeah. And if there's ever, if there's anything about it going on or anything coming down to the wire that you have any concerns or interest, if you can't reach her, please feel free to call me. I'll try and answer what I can.
I guess, Gene, my question would be is, since you, since the American Legion is the sponsor, lead on this. Rather than, the chamber would send me an invoice, but in your case, all I need is just a letter from the organization requesting that I.
Just need it on our letterhead.
On your letterhead.
Sure.
Instead of an invoice.
Distribute that.
Yeah, and that, that's perfectly, we can handle that real easily. And we are, soon as I can gather up my commander and round him up for a few minutes one of these days, we're going to go to the bank and we're gonna set up a, a separate account to make it easy to be accountable for the, for the donations. Because we, I received some donations last year from individuals after the fireworks. I had probably two hundred dollars worth of donations come in after that.
And that'll happen.
Yeah.
You know, you're still basing in the glory of fireworks.
Right.
Here's a hundred dollars for next year, yeah.
And that's, and we want that to happen, and I wanna be able to be accountable and, and keep it all separate. So we're gonna, we're just gonna put it in a separate account, and that way we'll know what's going on with it. And anybody else is welcome to know what's going on with it. And anybody else is welcome to know what's going on with it. So.
Anybody got any questions for Gene or Amy? Thank you very much.
Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to come in and talk to you.
Good work, Gene. Thank you. Okay, Casey. Casey Coles, Fee Waiver for Centennial Park, from Bet.
Hello, I passed around a new packet. I know Shota had given you one. I've received draft plans since then and then I revised them to color code them so that everybody could kind of see it a little bit easier, our discussion tonight. You'll have to bear with me. That's not working. The Fee Waiver is for Centennial Park. This would be for Ninth and Main. And basically, you have an LLC that is requesting a permit from my office. Right now, it would be a location improvement permit and let's see, right now, it would be a building permit for the sidewalk and the electrical and the plumbing that would be going in. I'm trying to think of all the different components. The location improvement permit and the signed permit that I have listed on here would be under your zoning ordinance. So, the concrete sidewalk, electrical, plumbing would all be under your building code and that's why they're all listed. So, this Fee Waiver would be for them for the 100 West Ninth Street and it would basically be for the building and the zoning and the signed permit that would be issued, perhaps maybe not all at the same time, but eventually, once the park progresses. So, that would be request number one of the council. Any comments, concerns?
Any dialogue? I'd entertain a motion. Some moved to waive the fees for this project.
Second.
Smith, came to the motion. Heidi seconded those.
From Fitzwater.
Oh, it was Fitzwater, I'm sorry.
I caught, I caught it that time.
I vote against it.
Oh, can I ask a question? For all the setbacks on the sidewalks and everything, figure it up to what your spec should be?
No, that would be my next request. You're moving ahead, John.
The items you got on the list.
Before we get into...
The Fee Waiver? Okay.
Have a clean slate.
Okay. Go through it all. All right, sounds good.
Regardless of what we decide on the other items, are we not willing to waive the fee? I mean, do you, do you, were you asking table the...
I think, I think we're putting a cart, a horse, just a smidgen maybe and once we find out everything else, could we table it for a little bit?
Well, I, I'll withdraw my motion.
Thank you, Mark. Just until Casey finishes everything.
Try, you withdraw your second?
No, no second. Yes.
Okay. So, the motion is withdrawn.
Awesome. We have, the drawing that you see, I'll, I'll refer back to the drawing real quick and explain a few things. Your city municipal code requires that all sidewalks are built adjacent, adjoining the lot line. In layman's terms, so basically, you build a sidewalk, it has to be five feet wide and it has to set adjoining the actual lot line. What this does in the eyes of the law is that that sidewalk sits within your right-of-way, you own it, and it allows the public to use it because it's in your right-of-way. It's in a public right-of-way so the public can use that sidewalk and they can utilize that, you know, that sidewalk. Your code also requires adjoining property owners to maintain the sidewalk. So, that's, you know, that's the yin and the yang. So, the sidewalks are built in the public right-of-way, the city allows those to be there, to be a public service for, you know, pedestrian traffic. The adjoining property owners, everybody kicks in to help maintain those sidewalks. It's the yin and the yang of the city municipal code, think about it that way. In the placement of the sidewalk being adjoining a lot line, that also gives you the relative placement of your tree lawn, which is also another city service as far as aesthetic beauty of, of, you know, of the city streets. Your right-of-way is typically run from 60 to 66 foot wide. I mean, they vary, every street varies, but that would be a very common right-of-way here in the city. Ninth Street is 66 feet wide. That's also where you put your public utilities, so that's where your sewer, your water, your storm sewers, your fiber optic lines can go, buried cable, you name it. That's, your right-of-way is typically the place where those type of utilities will go. In the case of the plans for the park, you can see that the drawing, I went ahead and I color coded the lawn. You can see at the very bottom of this diagram is four feet wide. A tree lawn is typically, depending on the age of the sidewalk, typically eight to 10 feet. The older sidewalks don't tend to be five feet wide. So, you can have anywhere from an eight to 10 foot tree lawn. And that, of course, accompanies the roots of the trees and allows them not to tear up the roads and that type of thing. In this particular drawing, what the planners have proposed is a four-foot tree lawn. They have gone to the tree board and they requested that no trees be planted in this area and mostly for demonstration purposes of any type of activity in the park. If Ninth Street were to be closed off because some type of activity were occurring in the park, then there could be people who were there to enjoy those festivities on Ninth Street and they could see into the park without having the trees in their way. So, from my understanding, the tree board has agreed to this. And so, you can see the four-foot tree lawn there, there was then planned a five-foot sidewalk. And then there's another five to six feet before the property line, which is where the request tonight comes from. Your code requires all of those sidewalks to be adjoining the lot line and if it's not, a special request can be made to the plan commission for the sidewalk to be placed in a different area. Typically, this pops up when you have maybe a tree that's sitting on the property line and the sidewalk has to go around it or maybe some type of utility that's sitting there that the sidewalk has to veer around. In this case, the plan commission did discuss it last night. They normally, how I would handle these types of situations is I would come to you first and ask you for your opinion because you own the right-of-way and then I would take it to the plan commission and I would say, okay, the city council has given their blessing and, you know, these were the comments from the city council. And according to the municipal code, it's, it's your authority that has to ultimately approve this and let them have their discussion based on that. We had to go a little bit backwards this time because I know that they would like to get started and the concrete contractor is a week, 70, 10 days behind, or at least he was last week. So, it worked out better that they couldn't start, but they really wanted to start doing some earth moving yesterday. So, I went to the plan commission last night. I did recommend that they approve it with the city council, with a condition the city council also approve it because you own the right-of-way and they wholeheartedly agreed. They also understood my concern where that comes from, not being able to speak to you first. So, the three conditions that they had a discussion about and they put in their motion was, number one, the sidewalk placement is approved by the city council. Number two, that no parking is allowed on the south side of the park along Ninth Street. They were very concerned about the safety of pedestrians and children being in that park, running in between cars, whether it was parallel parking or angled parking. They definitely were not in favor of the angled parking just because of the narrow street at Ninth Street. And so, they asked for that to be a condition, no parking allowed on that south side, which you can see in this drawing. The committee did not have, they did pull that parking out after these concerns were brought to light. And then the third request would be that the park be owned by the city of Rochester with eighteen, within 18 months. Obviously, this is not a typical request because there is no obstacles in the way for the sidewalk to be moved. And so, what they do however, only if, they understand that if the city were to own the park, they also own the right-of-way. So, the movement of that sidewalk, you know, would be up to the city. So, they would like to have, they would like to know that the park would be owned by the city in 18 months if it is moved, so.
Yeah, it, it's a situation that is a little unusual. Normally, when we're dealing with these things, we're talking about a private property owner and the local ordinances and such. This is going to be a city-owned park at some point. We've asked for some latitude on some of these things because of the things that a property owner would come into play with are going to happen with the park. And there is an agreement, right now, the LLC owns it, it's a venture group and will continue on until the park's completed and then it'll be turned over to the city.
And the, the other side of this request would be, the plan commission did not have any authority over this, but I need the city council's approval on the fact that there will be components of the park within your right-of-way. The, all of the codes, whether they're city municipal code or zoning code or your building codes, all deal with the constraints of lot lines. In this particular case, this lot is 41.25 feet wide and the components that you can see, the blue line around this diagram is the lot line. So, this is giving you the demonstration of that 41.25. There's another five foot of components of this park that sit within your 66 foot right-of-way. And for the permit, I need your approval to allow not only the landscaping that is a part of the park. I mean, it's not just someone planting daisies by their mailbox type of a thing. This is actually a part of the park. They have, also have proposed plans for the fencing, the historic fencing that Mr. Peterson donated to be allowed to put up. You can see, I coded it green, the squiggle lines that are green that go in between the blue lot line, between your sidewalk and within that lot. The majority of this fencing would be setting within your right-of-way, within that five foot between the sidewalk and the lot line. So, I need the council's approval to be able to put those minutes in my file so that later on, no matter what happens with this lot, if someone comes in and gets the plans for it because maybe they want to build a pavilion or they want to do something, they understand that they can't build that pavilion on the edge of what they perceive as the lot line. Because they'll perceive the sidewalk as the lot line. And they need to understand that the sidewalk is not the lot line. The minutes prove that the city just granted approval for this landscaping and a fence and that is it. Everything that needs to be built within the 41.25 feet unless an additional approval is given.
Casey, do you have any idea what, where those lines that are underground now run? Will they be under the lawn? The street lawn portion and the sidewalk? Or do we have utilities that run under those, that other five feet you're asking for the variant? The question becomes, what happens if that has to be torn up? Because there's a lot of park that would have to be redone if somebody had to access something under that area.
My guess, there has not been an 811 locate done yet, to my knowledge, because they have not started yet. My guess would be there is nothing in that five feet currently. And the reason why I say that is because if you go up to the site where the existing asphalt is that people have been parallel parking on, from there to the north property line was building. And it was ju, it was recently excavated. And what this, what you see is fill. So, everything from that current asphalt to that north line has been dug out. My guess, and again, it's just a guess, is that there is not a utility under that currently. I know the water tap is about mid-lot on the east line, if I remember correctly. Because I believe it was, it was running and they had to seal it at one point, so...
Yeah, we, we know where that is.
Right.
We know where the storm sewer situation is.
And the electric comes in on... Yeah. Gas comes in off of Ninth Street and then the electric comes on off of the north side in the alley, like toward the alley, where you see the privacy fence diagram. Right back here by the barrier-free parking space, this is where the, the pole is for the electrical. So, you have electrical, gas, and a tap not in that area, the water tap.
Is the blue line, is that where on the south side, is that the current boundary between the fill and whatever concrete or pavement is there?
No, the blue line you see on here would be the lot line. That would be this...
I understand that, but where?
But no, the asphalt would be the gray, the north side of the sidewalk, the gray you see here. And we actually went out and measured this. Dave Carr and my inspectors and I actually went out and we measured the right-of-way to the best of our ability from Walgreens side over. Then we also measured, we measured in a couple of different areas by the rule of thumb, trying to find the right-of-way without a survey, that's all we can do. But we were pretty close to our mark where we were thinking that the property line was on the north side and where you see the north side of that gray area, that is approximately where that asphalt is currently located. Now, the one thing you need to keep in mind is with the sidewalk shifted five foot to the south, your sidewalks are not going to line up. You have an existing sidewalk that is, what is commonly known as is RTC's parking lot to the west of this park. There is the Centennial Park, there's an alley, and then there is, the city owns a small area of parking. It's about seven parking lots and then the rest of it, RTC owns. And there is an existing sidewalk there with a brick wall. That sidewalk will actually set to the north of this one, just a little bit. So, it will come in over here, so you'll have kind of a catty corner jog in this.
But it breaks it up with the drive-in with the alley.
The alley is, right. This sidewalk ends at the alley, yeah.
And she makes a point, there was something I didn't realize, the city owns seven parking places there in the RTC lot. So, those, at least four of those will be dedicated to the Centennial Park parking. So, the mother who wants to take your children to the park for lunch or whatever has a place to park along with the parking places there at the park. And we'll leave Ninth Street completely vacant of any parking.
We figured it up when we were looking at the parking, the seven, the three on-site and then there are two in close proximity on Main Street as well. So, you really would have 10 to 11 parking spaces for the general public and you have one barrier-free spot on the actual lot itself.
Those parking places to the back of the park could be utilized for food carts for any program or anything going on.
That's a good point, Ted, because they're, they have planned to put a grid. It's a grid underneath this section here and basically, it'd be under the sod to maintain the weight of any type of portable stage or food truck that would be pulled on there. We kind of jostled around a few ideas about having that area be pavers or be some type of stamped concrete or something that would match the ideas of the park. And one of the contractors stated they did have a metal mesh that they can put under that sod to where it could sustain the weight.
You know, whenever you start a project like this, first of all, you have a limited area to deal with, a very limited area. And you don't realize that until you get into the program. So, we had lots of ideas for permanent staging and pavilions and it's not that big of an area. And it just keeps, it keeps adding to the cost. So, we decided that we'll leave that area open, have it paired to bring portable staging, whatever, in and get your, get your programs established and at some point down the road, somebody wishes to do something. You know, you may put a pavilion up and put a band up there and it sounds like an echo chamber. We don't know. We just, we want to take this in a progressive manner, step by step, to make sure we don't do something wrong. With that being said, there's also a drainage plan that has been approved and it's quite doable. It can be done for a minimal cost. So, we're still looking at a completed park around $120,000, $125,000, the way it is today.
May I say something?
Sure.
Well, I have two things, actually. The first thing I would say is, I'm coming from the ADA coordinator for the city. My concern by offsetting these sidewalks, first of all, first and foremost is, is yes, you're coming up to an alley, but now you're offsetting a, for somebody who may be disabled or in a wheelchair or otherwise not able to motor as easily. You're coming up to a sidewalk and now you're making them turn and go back this way instead of being able to go straight across. Depending on your motor skills at that point, that may be okay, it may not be. That is my first concern as the ADA coordinator, that we are offsetting a sidewalk, a five-foot wide sidewalk in the middle of our downtown in a very busy area. Walgreens is, that is highly traveled from foot traffic. The other concern I would have... The other concern I would have is, um, currently this is, this is privately owned, this particular project. It is not owned by the city yet. I would have concern that if we don't adhere to what our current codes say, and have this park stay within the boundaries that has been placed, you're setting a precedence. And we need to be cautious of that moving forward. Just noting, understanding, everything would be documented, everything would be there. But down the road, if somebody were to, if, if fifty years down the road, live developer comes in and says, "I'll pay you a million dollars for that lot because I've got fabulous idea."
So.
Sell, but now you've got, you've got a right of way issue. And you have, now you have completely eliminated the opportunity for them to have any kind of parallel parking. Because if you eliminate the, for, for a park, this is fine. But you, you have taken away an opportunity for them to be able to have. I, I agree with not having angle parking right there, it was always a hazard. You know, growing up, I can remember that, that parallel parking, but, or, I'm sorry, angle parking. But to put in a parallel parking section on Ninth, Ninth Street right there wouldn't be as offensive as long as it stayed far enough away from Main Street and pulling into that crosswalk intersection. The other challenge I see from an ADA perspective is, is just like Casey said, we have two sidewalks adjoining. We have our Main Street sidewalk, we have our Ninth Street sidewalk. Right now, they mesh and they meet because they were designed that way. By implementing something like this, now, I don't know what kind of effect that's gonna have on that particular crosswalk at that intersection.
Well, there's still not many.
They will.
I don't know if we will have an issue with end that, because you would, you would join two, a, a state highway, two state highways actually right there.
I looked at that actually this morning, and the ramp may have to be redone on that corner. Because of how far back the sidewalk's gonna set. I think this sidewalk's going to intersect the ramp. And the ramp is sloped north and south. It, it's not a fanned ramp where the east and west would carry you down gradually the way you're supposed to. You know, you're going to come up to it and then it'll be a, a depression because the ramp is actually going this way, so you're gonna come up to the edge of it. Um, so the ramp, I saw that this morning when I went by and was looking at it. It may have to be redone, I don't know, I didn't measure. But Shada's right, that may be something that would have to be looked at.
I believe, and you can check with Dave Carr on this, but the plans are to tear all that out for the drainage department to re-bore it all.
They redid the drainage plan and put the basins on the lot.
Okay, okay.
When they switched out the parking.
Okay.
Yeah.
But those are just my concerns, uh, again, I think my biggest one, A, the ADA one, that is a big one. And you as the council are the authority on that. If we have ADA concerns or complaints, it has to come to you guys.
And this is on the, the Ninth and Main?
Ninth and Main and the, the down Ninth Street, when you get to that alley. Because when you get to that alley, you're, if you offset this by five feet, you've got a five-foot offset of that sidewalk. So you would be coming up and then jogging over.
I see what you mean, no, okay.
Uh, you know, my, my, but my other biggest concern is, is the, is, is setting a precedence of, of, of not making, not keeping ourselves in check and making ourselves stay. Even currently it's privately owned, but eventually it'll, it, the hope and the plan is that the city will own it. But we should be setting a standard that we're set, we're staying within our own ordinance, within our own codes. That's just my, my concern moving forward, um, that that could raise some, like I said, setting a precedence down the road to bring that park out. As beautiful as it is, it's a beautiful design, all the designs have been, been pretty, I, I can, that I have seen. But just something to think about as you guys have your discussion on, on how to move forward with this.
Any idea, Casey, why it, why it was drawn in violation of the code? I mean, is it, the intent was just to make the park as big as possible in that space?
I believe, I don't believe they knew the code. Um, I actually didn't get into the, the nitty gritty as far as seeing a final. I've seen multiple, um, drafts throughout the last year. Um, but most of the time when they were brought in, it was speaking of one component. You know, we're thinking of having a stage, what do I have to do for that? So we would talk about that. We, I'm thinking of an ADA ramp, if it's depressed twenty-four inches or eighteen inches, what do I do with that? So I was always talking about one component versus another, and, and the first time I'd seen a final plan was, um, when they brought it in for the permits. And that really started the, uh, going through it with a fine tooth comb, unfortunately, at that point. So I don't think that they really knew that that code was in there. My office enforces that and we hadn't gone over it. Um, but when I asked them why it was, uh, pulled back to the south, that was, uh, the response, is they wanted to make the park as large as they could, um, for the facility.
Yeah, it's, it's a tiny area.
But we still have to work with what we have though, can't, Shada said we can't just expand because we want to.
That's my concern, especially if, if the plans don't follow through and for, for some unforeseen reason, the city does not take over this space. I can foresee that as being a problem down the road for other areas. And if you think of it in terms, one of the other areas we've talked about as being a pocket park in our downtown would be in an area that would be like in the middle of two buildings. At that point, you are forced to stay within your boundary. You know, this one, fortunately or unfortunately, is on a corner. So you have the ability to take that boundary and push it out. Um, I, I, I'm just, with, in light of all of these conversations that Ted and I have been involved in in the last couple of months with other things coming up from past practices, I just don't want us to be in a situation where ten, twenty, thirty, fifty years down the road, a council and a clerk treasurer are sitting here having this conversation about the choices that we made back then because it's affecting of the potential decision for the future. Does that make sense?
So we'd have to bring the sidewalk back, encroach into the park area, the sidewalk to line up?
The blue line. The sidewalk would have to be pulled to the blue line and, um, yeah, it wouldn't encroach into the, the park area. The park area need, would need to be shrunk, five feet.
Yeah, you're gonna have small trees or whatever.
Well, I think there's plenty of lawn area, you know, it can be condensed if that was your wish.
Well, you would have a larger lawn from the sidewalk up.
Right. This, right, I think they want.
And if you do a lawn out there and make that lawn harder, then we still have the tree board saying, we're not gonna put trees up.
Well, no, if we're to change it, we'll put trees in.
That's a different board, Brian.
But I think, I think also if we, if, for Casey's purposes, this makes her job a lot easier by saying if you stay within the guidelines of the code, then you guys, the only thing you really have on the table is the fee waiver, or the permit fee waiver. Would that be correct?
Right.
If we go back to that blue line, we're just creating a bigger lawn area.
A bigger tr- a tree lawn and then your, these area, these areas here would just shore up five feet. You know, you'd see this, these landscaped areas pull, pulled up.
For the ADA purposes, I, I assumed it would be concrete area, not lawn area?
No.
No.
No, the tree lawn would be.
And everything that's gray would be the lawn.
Yeah.
So all of this would be green.
You know, and I'm thinking in terms, I have two small kids. And if I take my kids to that park, I would much rather have an extra couple, three feet of grass because they, children tend to run to grass, they don't wanna play on concrete. So I'm thinking it's a busy enough intersection, that gives just an, an added buffer of off of the sidewalk.
Before the street.
Before you hit that street.
You would have a tree lawn of nine feet total.
Right.
And then you would have a sidewalk of five feet, and then the park pavers and landscaping would begin.
Yeah, I don't think that's a huge issue. It's, looks like it's workable. Okay.
That includes our ADA, and I'm thinking too in terms of ADA also, we're not gonna be running into too much terror in the front quadrant.
The Main Street ramp, I think, was just done five, five years ago, so when we started everything. Um, and it would still be in compliance, you know, if everything shifted.
The back sidewalk meshing up, they line up now, you're not, I, I, it makes it, I, I see things a little different being the ADA coordinator.
Moving back, moving back with the blue line eliminates a lot of potential issues. And I don't think that's a big deal. Um, I, you know, the project manager may jump up and down and yell, he said, "This is version twelve."
I'm gonna let you make those phone calls. You know, I, I volunteered to be the representative here, Terry Lee abandoned me. And I know I'm on TV, he can hear me say that, Terry Lee abandoned me to talk about this.
You're watching.
Yes, Dave, talk to Ted. This is not me, don't get mad at me.
Yeah, yeah.
She had also mentioned last night, Casey had mentioned that lawn area that is right there between your sidewalk and the street, uh, the owners preferred to leave that tree free.
Right, and the tree board, it was taken to the tree board and they approved that. I think he was joking, Brian was joking. Brian needs a sign, just kidding. No, Brian needs a sign, just kidding.
Karen, what I will do to confirm that, uh, is I will make sure that when I do the minutes for the council meeting, that I include that particular verbiage, because typically we would go back to review minutes on things. It's usually our council or Board of Works, typically not the tree board or other, um, associate board that we have. So I'll make sure I document that in the, that is the main priority.
Now, again, again, they're, they're, they're antsy to get the project going, the contractors are. So can we get a motion to approve the waiver of the fees with the provision that we stay within the, uh, guidelines of the, uh, of the, uh, the ordinance? Can we do that? And I'm sure she'll, she'll watchdog that.
And what about part three? Do we want to say that we will assume ownership once it's a, I would have it part?
Well.
We'll have it.
And the thing you need to, um, keep in mind, I'm trying to find something, I'm not trying to be rude, I apologize. I just don't work with this that often, doesn't like me. The thing you can need to keep in mind is if actually the sidewalk is in compliance with your code, then the planning commission's decision last night is a moot point. The only reason why the plan, it was taken before the planning commission is because it was not in compliance with your code. And they are the body that your code stipulates has to grant that waiver. So if it meets the code, then it's moot. Um, you know, that would be your decision, if you wanted to put that condition on it, something.
Is there an amount to the, the fees that are being waived? Like we're waiving a thousand dollars of fees, or two hundred dollars of fees, or it's just out of the air?
Does that have the amount here?
No. The sign permit is three dollars a square foot and it's based on how large the sign is. And I don't have any plans on that, so I, I'm not sure. Then normally what we do, your sidewalk permit with the electrical and plumbing, it would be based on, um, the cost of the, the estimated cost of that portion of the project, um, or of the project. And, um, and the number of inspections, because I don't have a square footage, because there's no structure, so. So I don't have those numbers, and it's all, it's an equation, but that's how they're figured up.
I think less than five hundred dollars?
Oh, my gosh, yeah.
Yeah.
I would be shocked if it hit a hundred, but I shouldn't say that. I, I mean, you're talking electrical, but we don't inspect landscaping. So you're, you're talking the minimal plumbing is this, the water tap and your sprinkle system, which are soaker hoses. Uh, you know, so you have a main line going down the whole thing, and then they'll have soaker hoses off of it. And your electrical, what few outlets, um, that, you know, the electrical have to be run for the lighting. The lighting that's proposed is, um, it's all at grade, for the most part. Some of it is actually in the mason, um, you know, the walls, the sitting walls, it'll have, uh, lower light, but it'll light up the walking paths. And then they have some lights that are proposed to be in the landscaping themselves with uplighting into the trees in the landscaping to light, uh, the landscaping. So even the lighting is very minimal, and that would be your electrical of that, the inspectors would check in any outlets, exterior outlets.
And I will say, we, we've waived permit fees in the past for other nonprofits, organizations several times. I'm trying to think, I think we put the, when the council put the garage up, over there by the council and aging building, I believe we waived those permit fees for that.
Council of Aging, Lions Club, I mean, city, the county, all the towns that, we've done it for multiple nonprofits.
Less than a hundred bucks.
Well, plus you're talking about.
I'll say less, you know what, I'll say less than two hundred, just to make sure I'm safe, how's that?
The difference.
I don't know how big their sign's gonna be.
In this case, you're talking about a property that's then actually gonna become an asset of the city.
Correct.
A, a very, much larger enhancement to the park program than two hundred dollars.
Right, yeah.
I would, uh, I would entertain a motion then to waive the fees with the premise that we stay within the ordinance stipulation and design.
And so you're not including the ownership in, in what you've said?
Oh, well, yes, in the ownership, uh, uh, statement.
I have a suggestion on that point. I would suggest if we're gonna include the language of the ownership, not include that the city take it, but that the city be offered the deed.
Well, well, wait a minute, we don't even need to include it.
You don't need to.
Yeah, cause that, that was a stipulation on.
Now out of.
Yeah, that was a stipulation on.
That's a very planned scenario.
So, but, but it's just, that's a moot point, uh.
If it's only compliance, it's in compliance whether the city owns it or a private individual owns it. It will always be in compliance, so.
And in reality, the city will have possession of that long before eighteen months, but we, we don't need it in the, in the motion.
So you're asking for a motion to waive the fees with the stipulation that the park be done within code of, of our.
Building codes.
Building codes.
City municipal codes.
Yeah, yeah, I think so.
And be.
I, I'll get it in the minutes, right.
I mean, is that a motion?
I will make that motion.
Those are the favors signified by raising the right hand of Richard.
Mason's like, I don't get it.
I'm saying, do we even need that though? Cause if we didn't approve the, well, it's just waiving the fees.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's all we need.
Yeah.
Well, but I needed a decision on whether or not it needs to be within the forty-one point two-five feet or within the plan that's been proposed to me with the permit. So, I mean, I'm glad you put it in there because I need everybody to be clear that either it's within the lot lines, or they're able to extend into the sixty-six foot right of way, so.
Can I extend beyond forty-one point two-five feet?
Forty-one point two-five feet, yes.
And just, uh, for that, for everyone.
Stay in the blue line.
The wall situation. Enid Tate and I are working on a memorandum of understanding for the control of the wall. Uh, she owns the wall, she owns the building. The, the MOU, uh, that we're looking at kicking back and forth between, through, we can get back to the other. Basically says there will be, uh, discussion between building owner and the city on any, anything that goes to the wall. She says she wants to be a good steward in regards to that. I said, we just don't, we don't wanna see two mail pouch tobacco show up on the wall, something like that. She's not like, oh, no, no, no.
You know what, that's a pretty dystopian idea, that building down there.
Henry cigar.
So, so that, that's in process. The, uh, yeah. The, uh, the calcium condition, the white condition, it looks like we've gotten that.
Looks a lot better.
We've gotten that under control, uh, it's been treated with special chemical for, uh, for that type of a condition. Based them in on the mortar, that was used, the heavy duty mortar. And I think we've got that retarded, so. Okay, um, moving right along. Stormwater engineering fees.
That's the, for the additional appropriations from the rainy day fund.
Right. That, that ties into resolution three dash twenty seventeen.
Correct.
We're, we're asking for, uh, some, defer rates, some monies from the rainy day fund for our engineering, uh, folks who have started, uh, the process of our storm sewer upgrade. Uh, that, uh, with our Gantt chart, uh, we're anticipating completing, uh, by the end of twenty nineteen. Then, of course, that will, uh, be financed through a bonding process after we start the, uh, the storm sewer utility program. As I understand, Shada, our, our accounting firm is yet to complete the rate situation and stuff that will be brought to this body to approve. Then we'll get our utility established and, uh, the Board of Works will be in control of that utility as written by the ordinance. And we'll have a department head just like with the water board and get, get things, get things moving. Our accountants tell us after several months of storm sewer payments, if you will, tariffs, if you will, then you show that you have enough monies in reserve to go forth and apply for your bond. So that, that's the process, but right now, we're looking for some monies to help with the preamble, the really engineering parts right now. That's a hundred, a hundred and fifty?
Hundred and twenty-five was where I, I'm starting, because we already have, I believe it's fifty thousand already appropriated in rainy day. So this would set us at a hundred and seventy-five thousand available to spend if we need to. But right now, to get us up to the point where we're ready to do bonding, I, I think we're right around that hundred to a hundred and thirty, unless we run into some challenges in between.
Chad is looking for a cushion there to help.
I am, exactly, I'm just trying to, because I don't want him to keep coming back to you and saying, can we do it again, can we do it again? So I'm trying to get it spaced out enough to where it would get us through until we're to that point where bonding. And we can always, the conversations we've had, we've, I've been very open with the engineering firm on this just because this is such a green project right now and we aren't receiving our revenue. And just to give you guys an update, I've actually got it on the board of works agenda for Thursday as well. I had reached out to the county, again, we, John may remember this, we reached out to them a few years ago asking about how much it would cost us to add that fee, it is, it's a stormwater fee onto our tax bills, rather than send it through our utility billing office. And I did get quotes back from the county on that, so we know how much that's going to cost us to have that done. And we're, you know, the dollars are, they're not that much from our perspective to be able to pay the county to say yes, please, take care of that fine item. And then the, we, as I included in your packet, there is already an invoice that has came in for engineering fees. So with your approval tonight for me to pay this out of rainy day funds, I will get the, this first invoice taken care of, paid out of rainy day to get that vault rolling, as opposed to pulling it from either riverboat or wastewater. Because those are the two funds right now that we typically take care of stormwater. And both of them are a little, are starting to get a little trinkage to them, so I'm trying to protect them too. So that's, that's what that is for. I mean, I don't know, as far as the project moving forward, like I said, we're waiting on the rate study. Once he's got the parcels, I contacted Christine Schreiber, the county auditor, she got him a copy of all of the parcels within the city. And so he, our accounting firm is going through and marking the permeable versus non-permeable, that type stuff, because that makes a difference on what kind of rate you would apply to that particular surface.
Yeah, it, it's been an interesting process, we've spent some monies from our budgeting fund that we've had available for some of the preliminary studies like cameras in the areas that we're talking about. We discovered our main storm sewer line going down the middle of Main Street. When we have a tenth of an inch of rain, because it was raining the day we camered it, that pipe is being utilized by twenty-five percent with a tenth of an inch of rain. So you can imagine why we flood all over town when we get a downpour. Those, that size pipe was put in when we had cobblestone streets. You talk about permeable areas, we have a whole lot less areas for water to go to now than we did when that sewer was initially put in. So.
I have a question real quick.
Yes.
Will y'all still be moving forward on the sidewalk survey, with the graining of the sidewalks sometime in the spring? Or is that still on the docket? For the, I think that's maybe the stormwater, that was one of the.
We had, we had that conversation with Dominic U and I believe he said that would be part of the project. But I'm not going to guarantee when.
Cool, understood, lots of details, yeah.
So shall we do it as part of the resol- as a resolution or?
The, what, what do you mean, as far as the vote, I, I would just jump to, to save time unless you guys have questions or, I would just jump to your, a resolution vote.
Sounds like one of me.
Unless y'all have questions or comments.
Been a long day. Counselwoman Smith, would you, do you want to read resolution three dash twenty seventeen?
Sure. Andy said you don't even have to read it if you don't want to, because it's a resolution.
Well, by title?
Y'all want to go home?
Yeah.
Well, I just think it's, I, I think it's ironic that we're looking for storm sewer monies with the rainy day. That's where it was supposed to come. Yeah. Okay, well, to make a motion to have it read by title only? Second? Those in favor? Oh, all of them. Take counsel.
Resolution zero three dash two oh one seven, additional appropriation.
Okay.
Goodman skipped out on that?
That's it. Those in favor passing the resolution. Make a motion to pass the resolution three dash seventeen, a motion.
So what?
Second? John, second? Those in favor signify by raising your right hand, five zero. Okay, and as far as any, are we, are we doing anything about?
I was just gonna, I was just gonna bring that up.
Terry's resolution, well, that's what I was gonna bring up, I've, I've been kind of scanning this and I, I think there's. Zero two dash twenty seventeen, oh, did you see this, John?
I not, I did not see it in the papers.
Looks like it needs some rewriting, because he refers to a different, different number from the resolution.
Yeah, Amy and I were discussing that a little bit ago and, or it was Amy was reviewing it. What it is, is there's already a resolution on file, the, the declaratory resolution when they establish the Tiff district.
The Tiff district, yeah.
And so that's what he's referencing back to. Now, there are a few minor grammatical references in here that Amy said he didn't think would be detrimental to the resolution. It's just a, a reference, like one of it was confirming amended resolution versus amending resolution.
And, and there's no exhibit A.
And, yeah, and there's no exhibit A.
There's a reference on the second page to exhibit A.
Oh, yeah.
I, I can't, it's possible it meant exhibit A to the resolution, declaratory resolution. I don't think it was intended to be set to exhibit A to this resolution, I don't see it.
Yeah, it wasn't included in this. I think they, the exhibit A.
Yeah, is, is there, I haven't heard anything from, is there some time constraint he's under?
He, well, I believe it's, there's a time constraint he's under because what, what has happened is, is when they first did the establishment of the Main Street Tiff, they inadvertently, they included the rail line out north of town.
Right.
Not realizing it was going to be the entire rail line through the county. So we are not, we're not entitled to any of those monies from those adjoining property owners along the rail line.
This is correct.
This is to remove those rail lines and he had originally had scheduled to bring it before you in January. Had to pull it, I, I don't recall the reason for it, but he had pulled it off of the agenda. So I've just been waiting on him to get back to me, to get it back on in front of you, to, to get this resolution passed because it's gone through the county, they've approved it, to get that taken care of so we can clean it up, essentially what it is.
Exhibit A is a map. Exhibit A was the map. And Terry said that the redevelopment commission was meeting this week. I bet he published the public hearing notice for them to sign their portion. Every one of us has had to sign this, the planning commission signed one. You know, the redevelopment commission gave it to the planning commission and asked them to sign it for consideration for you. You guys have one, you sign it, it goes back to redevelopment commission and it should be a public hearing, I'm assuming. And so that may be what he meant when he said.
What his time constraint is, yeah, it's already.
Because they always have a timeline whenever they give it to the planning commission where it says this date you have it, you know, they, we gave it to you and it lists them all.
And the redevelopment commission meets, they always meet the first Wednesday of their month, so that would be next week.
Counsel, folks, it's up to you, if you're just in your capable hands, if you want to act on it tonight or table it, it's up, up to you folks. It doesn't appear to be anything that's of a.
I would prefer to act on it, but if, if we don't, then I would suggest we do a special meeting.
Sounds like.
To do this in order to, that there's time constraints.
What do you think, Counselwoman Garrett?
Which I don't, I'm not.
I just don't like to get rid of the situation, but all of a sudden, you know, it's not on the agenda and then it comes in and you just throw it in front of everybody's face tonight and hey, hurry up and make a decision on this.
Let's have a fifteen-minute, half-hour special meeting.
That's just my way.
Uh, let me, I will email Terry and see what his, does noon, give me a time, does noon work for everybody with lunch schedules? I know Mason's around on Thursdays. I mean, does that seem to work with everybody if I try to schedule like a noon lunch or eleven?
Within the next couple of days?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll get a voluntary, yeah, the next, because I, we've got to give forty-eight hours notice for media. Can I use this, Christine, would you? Can I use, this is my forty-eight hours notice? So, but I, I'll do, I'll work, I'm out tomorrow with, with my dad, but I can, I'll be working from those. So I'll shoot out emails and see what I can get coordinated and then get times out with you guys, what works with Terry's schedule.
How about noon Friday, the thirty-first?
Does that work?
Just stop in here for fifteen, twenty minutes.
I will be out of town.
Twelve o'clock?
Twelve o'clock.
He fits out of town. Right at twelve o'clock on Friday, yeah, okay.
If you have any problems with her, let me know, then we can.
Well, there's enough other people to do it and that's not a problem.
Yeah.
Probably Alkar is loving that thing.
I would entertain a motion to adjourn, I'd like to thank my neighbors for coming tonight, couldn't see you. Actually, I'm seeing at my house, so I'm glad you came there to that. You came here to verify that he's on his.
He is doing his job.
Good to see you guys.
I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
I already got John down to make the motion.
Okay, second, I'll second that, Mason second, so those in favor.
I just grabbed the name out of the top of the sky.
Thank you, folks, kind of a long meeting tonight, thank you very much.